Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
And Commissioner Scoggan let us know he would not be able to make it today. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we're moved to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McCabe, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under new business to add a introduction of our new commissioner.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any objections? Motion passes. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as amended? Hearing seeing none, the agenda is approved. Okay, Commissioner McCabe, would you please lead us in the pledge? It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Under the consent agenda tonight, we have the regular mating minutes for January 20th. And there are no introductions. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Okay. At this time, we will move to audience participation. Members of the audience may speak regarding any topic that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait until that topic comes up. If there's anyone on the phone who wish to speak, please press star three. And do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak? All right. Is there any objection to closing audience participation? All right, hearing and seeing none, our audience participation is now closed. We will move to the public hearing quasi judicial matters. Okay, this is for the commissioners. In order to ensure a fair process on planning commission decisions, the following shall be read by the chair after the resolution title and before each quasi judicial case is heard. I will read the title first. Resolution 24-31, a conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.30, conditional use permit for earth material extraction activities for the extraction of approximately 7.5 million cubic yards of earth material from an extraction site of 153 acres within three parcels totaling 235 acres on 7955 East Bogard Road, 3182 North Trunk Road, 7801 East Glad Court. Tax ID numbers, 18 November 01 Echo, 27 Alpha 002, 18 November 01 Echo, 27 Delta 001, and 18 November 01 Echo, 27 Delta 002. Applicant, Dan Steiner, PE for Central Gravel Products, and staff is Peggy Horton, current planner. All right, so for the commissioners, do you or any member of your immediate family have substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? And we will start with Commissioner Fernandez on the phone.
No.
Thank you. Everybody else on the panel? No, everyone is indicating no. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, or interested parties or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for a decision? And again, we'll start with Commissioner Fernandez.
No.
And everyone else? Everyone else is indicating no. Are you able to be impartial in this decision, Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Okay. And everyone else is agreeing they can as well. Okay. This resolution was originally before us at the November 18th Planning Commission meeting, and there was a motion to delay the staff's recommendation. So at this time, I'd like to invite Peggy Horton to proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, my name is Peggy Horton, current planner with the Development Services Division. I'm pleased to provide the commission an overview of the staff report for Resolution 24-31, which can be found on page 11 of your packet. Dan Steiner, acting on behalf of the property owners, Mr. Havemeisters and Mr. Kircher, submitted this CUP application for the extraction of earth materials in May 2024. Central Gravel Products will operate the proposed extraction, which aims to remove approximately 7.5 million cubic yards of material by 2054. The parcels have frontage on both East Bogard Road and North Engstrom Road. East Bogard Road is managed by Alaska Department of Transportation, while North Engstrom Road falls under the jurisdiction of the Borough Public Works. The postponement of this meeting from November 18th to February 3rd allowed the applicant to provide additional details regarding access to North Bogard Road and visual screening along North Engstrom Road. Since that time, the applicant has updated the conditional use permit application with more comprehensive information. Staff has also included further analysis to support our recommendations, which we believe will assist the commissioners in its decision-making process. The report for this resolution includes important documents such as sections of the Borough Economic Development Strategic Plan, the Core Area Comprehensive Plan, the Wetlands Management Plan, all of which are relevant to the evaluation of this permit. It also contains the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation's Best Management Practices for Earth Material Extraction Activities and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Buffer Publication. Additionally, the report includes the current CUP application, comments from both internal and external agencies, as well as public feedback. Additionally, a few recent comments have been placed in your handout folders for review. Since the application was submitted in May 2024, staff has worked closely with the applicant to refine the operational details and assess the potential impacts and mitigation efforts on the surrounding area. There are discussions in several places throughout the staff report concerning visual screening, wetland buffers, and Bogard Road access and traffic safety. I want to go over these because they are important to the adjudication of this report. The applicant modified the visual screening plan to avoid worsening the snow drifting issue on North Engstrom Road. The berm that is now placed on the site plan may capture some of the snow behind it. But the weather is ever-changing and unpredictable nowadays. And if winds change or we find that the visual screening is not doing its job, we recommend allowing some flexibility for the visual screening measures to accommodate any unforeseen circumstances. And that's in my recommendations for the conditions of approval. On the wetlands buffer, the staff recommends a condition of approval to ensure the operation adheres to 1728060, which requires an undisturbed buffer within 100 linear feet from lake, river, stream, or other water body, including wetlands. Currently on the west side of Wasilla Creek, the operation site plan shows the extraction is within 100 feet of wetlands that are shown on the Cook Inlet Wetlands Inventory Maps. Staff suggests requiring a wetlands delineation for this area to determine exactly where those wetlands are, and then 100-foot buffer staked out from there. The wetlands maps can be found on page 67, and those discussions can be found in those areas of the staff report where I discuss the wetlands buffer. The third issue is traffic safety. The applicant received borough authorization to construct a driveway onto North Engstrom Road. This will be an in-only access to the property. Exiting the property is not permitted at this location. The applicant has applied for a state driveway permit to access East Bogard Road, which is currently under review by ADOT and PF. We expect ADOT to issue an approval to construct soon with conditions attached as laid out in the emails between DOT and the applicant and communicated to staff through email and phone conversations. Those emails between ADOT and the applicant are provided in the packet. And and staff has also had phone conversation with ADOT, verifying those special conditions that they're discussed in those emails. And we've incorporated these items into our findings. I will ask you to refer to page 61 of your packet, where you'll find an MSB fact sheet displaying the two approximate locations for the Engstrom Road to Trunk Road corridor. Notably, the southern route falls within the subject properties covered by this conditional use permit application. The decision to construct either the northern or the southern route is still under consideration. And there is no direct plans to construct right now. The North Lakes Community Council has requested that the Planning Commission insert a condition of approval mandating this gravel operation close the Bogard Road driveway and take access from the southern corridor route if and when it is constructed. This transition will involve formally discontinuing all operation activities at the East Bogard Road entrance, effectively redirecting all access to the property through the newly established corridors, except that the Engstrom Road access as a Bogard, as a borough driveway would continue. I have suggested language for this condition of approval if the commissioners should choose to adopt this requirement. So I wanted to say that the borough staff really appreciates the commission's agreement to postpone this hearing. I think it really provided valuable time for the applicant to update their application, for time for DOT to continue the review of the driveway permit, and for that visual screening measure, visual screening issue to be taken care of. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that postponement that you did. I will just quickly go over the public notice process. So MSB 1730035 directs public notice for all earth material extraction conditional use permits. Notice was mailed to all property owners within a half-mile radius of the subject property and to the North Lakes Community Council. A total of 357 notices were mailed. The Frontiersmen published the public hearing notification on September 20th of 2024. Planning staff posted the application material on the borough website. Planning staff emailed a request for comments to internal borough and outside agencies, including the North Lakes Community Council, on September 13th of 2024. Staff updated the public notice website after the postponement in November, and also after new information was received to allow the public to review that information. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Commissioner Allen, just a quick question. Is there a plan in terms of the extraction, the truck, the times of the trucking? Are they going to try to coordinate with the school bus? You see what I'm saying with it? So sort of pause in the morning and pause in the afternoon while the school buses are traveling on Bogard?
So I think is a really good question because the operator has a really good answer for you, and I think I should let him talk about it. He runs his operation, he intends to run his operation the way he runs his operation now, which accesses onto Colony Schools Drive. And so my understanding is he does pause for that kind of thing, but I will let him address that if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then at this time, if Dan Steiner would like to come up as the applicant. And come on up. Yeah, you can bring who you want. Over the table would be fine, if that's comfortable for you. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you would like to go ahead and give your presentation on the packet, or if anybody had any questions for you, might be best to go ahead and start with the presentation first.
Okay. My name's Dan Steiner. I'm a licensed civil engineer licensed in the state of Alaska. I've been hired by Central Gravel Products to help them obtain their permits to develop the gravel pit. I don't have too much of a presentation. Most of the information was presented by Peggy. I do have a statement that I want to make. I deal with a lot of different clients. I have been very impressed with those who operate the current Central Gravel Products. And I don't know if you're aware of that, but they currently have a gravel pit that's kitty corner across the current roundabout that they operate now. And so they're very familiar with the area and the best way to operate that. And I've been very impressed with how they try to be a good neighbor, how they want to accommodate the public. Their objections, or excuse me, their object is not to just make money, but it is also to be a good neighbor. And I think that reflects in some of the comments that were received by the borough. This has been a fun project to be part of. So I guess fire away with any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess I'll repeat my prior question. Is there a plan for consideration to school bus traffic, both in the morning and the afternoon, given your location near multiple schools?
And is it okay if I let the owner address that?
My name is Jade Loughlin, owner of Central Gravel Products, along with Kelly Heck, who's also owner of Central Gravel Products. Central Gravel Products has been there in that location at the corner of Trunk and Bogard for 35 years. We're just essentially moving kitty corner. We do limit our hours during the school time. We've trained our truckers pretty well not to show up much before 8:00 in the morning. So that way, the school traffic can go up to Colony Middle School, Colony High School. And then we don't try to go towards Palmer at all during the pickup time of Colony Middle School, Colony High School. So what we do there is we'll direct our trucks to go out, go up Palmer, Wasilla, go up Trunk Road to Palmer Fish Hook. We are extremely concerned about the time of the school and the traffic that is there. And we take it very serious. And we have a number of things that we do that are self-imposed regulations on operations, dust, things like that. So yes, we do consider the truck, the school traffic very much so, as well as right now, pretty rare we send a truck up Engstrom after 3:00 because it's just ridiculous. That intersection is just ridiculous.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Fernandez, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. With no other questions, we'll go ahead. I'm sorry.
Is there, I have a question for something that was read just a second ago, if that's okay, by staff. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Peggy, you talked about the wetland mapping, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I did want to point out a couple of things and then ask a question about this. There are a couple of places where you can get mapping of wetlands. And I do want to caution people, those maps are very inaccurate. I actually called the organization that put the mapping together for the maps that you're referring to, and they told me how they, basically they take aerial photos and decide if these are wetlands. I looked at the Fish and Wildlife Wetland Mapper. There is a very definitive area that is wetlands in that clump of trees. And we did go to the Corps of Engineers and got a, they made a jurisdictional decision that these are wetlands that are not under their jurisdiction. In other words, there's nothing that would prevent us from developing that. So I guess I'm asking, if we have a wetlands delineation and it comes back that these aren't wetlands, then we can, then we have no restrictions in that area. Is that correct, Peggy?
Through the chair, go ahead. So yes.
Sorry, maybe I'm not supposed to be asking.
No, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. I just wanted to address the wetlands that are around the area that was already determined not to be U.S. Army Corps jurisdictional wetlands. Those are not the wetlands that we're requiring you to, or that we're suggesting the Planning Commission put a condition on. Those wetlands, we saw as a newly mowed hayfield. So we can see that those aren't really. But what we're saying is the ones that are west of Wasilla Creek
Got you at this area.
is where you're showing that the operation will extract within 100 feet of those. And I agree with you. I agree with Mr. Steiner that the wetlands mapping is not exact. And the Cook Inlet Wetlands Inventory Maps say that. The National Wetlands Inventory Maps say that. So that's why I'm suggesting a recommendation that they get a wetlands delineator out there to delineate the western side of the Wasilla Creek wetlands and see whether or not they need to move their buffer. And if they do, this condition would allow that to happen. And if they don't have to, then they don't have to.
Thanks, Peggy. Then one other thing I did want to point out is that we do have approval from DOT right now for access off of Bogard Road. We've jumped through those hoops, and I just want to make sure that that is clear, that they have granted us. They've given us approval. They're still working on the final approval to construct paperwork, but they have told us that this is going to happen. Or they will allow us to get access off of that.
Okay, any questions?
Through the chair for Mr. Steiner. How far would you, or maybe this is for Peggy. How far would they have to move the buffer if they had to move it? How many feet are we talking here?
Through the chair. That depends on the wetlands delineator. So right now, the buffer shows right up against where that wetland shows up. And the code requires that they be 100 feet away from any wetlands.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't anticipate it to be more than maybe 50 feet from what we show now. If you look at that figure, that area that's blued out that follows the creek, a lot of that is also existing hayfields now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we're happy to do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead. You have another one? Go ahead.
The owner wanted to know if he could make a statement.
Absolutely.
Can I stand up there?
You may.
I don't like sitting down talking.
Hello, my name is Jade Loughlin. I'm the owner of Central Gravel Products. Just a quick little overview. The infrastructure that we create, that we provide for the valley, the borough is not really seeing the fact that we're running out of gravel. There's very, there's a lot of gravel pits that are on their last, within the last two years of operation that'll be leaving the valley. And when that happens, they're going to be moving to, you know, if we have to move out to Willow or something, our truck traffic is going to get ridiculous. So by keeping core area gravel pits viable, this keeps our transportation costs down. The cost for the road building right now that we're trying to do is the way the valley is growing, will go up by 200 to 300% if we move out to Willow or to, out to Houston area. So one of the things, like I said, it's vital that we, for safe roads, we keep as many trucks off of the road as humanly possible, which means keeping core area gravel pits open and safe. Which in turn, as a taxpaying citizen here, keeps my costs down because we're not fixing our roads all the time, as you can see with the Glen High with the amount of traffic that's on that. The, one of the, one of the things I don't think anybody's seeing is this is a 95-year-old farm that we're moving to and an 85-year-old farm that we're moving to, that we'd like to move to. We're already on a piece of the Kircher farm as it is, and we'd like to move over to another one. This is their way of keeping their property in their land, in their, in their family without having to sell to developers, pay taxes and stuff. So this is critical for them as well to keep that. And Francie will talk about that here in a little bit. But one of the things like Dan pointed out, we're extremely important to us to be good neighbors. We limit our hours to 8:00 to 5:30. We don't do any gravel screening on Saturdays to keep our sound levels down. The equipment that we run 50 feet away from it, we're at 65 decibel, which is ridiculously quiet. It's all designed to work in congested areas. We do hydro seeding. We do everything we can to not be a nuisance. If you drive by our gravel pit now, it's clean. There's no junk vehicles around. There's no garbage. It's always orderly, as you see it. As well as our customers are very important to us in the sense that we're the only gravel pit in the valley that loads five-gallon buckets for little old guys that still need to sit on their driveway for their wives that have lived here since they were 16. You know, I see 10 of those guys that come in and get five-gallon buckets every year. Granite Construction is not going to allow you to go in there and fill five-gallon buckets. We're vital to our neighbors. And we still load pickups, we load pickups with bobcats because, you know, we don't need to send 10 yards to everybody's house. So we're the only gravel pit in the valley that does that. And as you can see by who's in here tonight, you're going to hear a lot of that from them. So we do appreciate your time, and I really appreciate you guys postponing this. This is definitely taking years off my life, but it's been a big learning experience as far as what we're doing. And I encourage you, for any more questions, please speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 24-31. If there's anyone on, okay, stand by a second. Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Jason Ortiz, Deputy Director, Planning and Land Use. Commissioner Fernandez, you're on the line, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, are you en route here?
Yes, I am.
Can I ask about how far out you are? Because I was about to show a video, and it is crucial, since it's a quasi judicial matter, that you watched the video?
I would say about 20 minutes.
Okay. Is it possible for you to pull over to watch the video?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Lacy just sent it to your email, if you could safely pull over and then click on the video and just watch it, it's going to be just video. And what we'd like to do here is go ahead and show the video to everyone that's in attendance and to the planning commissioners that are present. Does that work for you?
Yes, it does, just getting pulled over now.
Okay.
And we'll open public hearing after the video.
And, just another side comment, this is the first time that we've tried using a drone to do a site visit. We think it might be pretty helpful on some of these types of permits. And so, this one, it is a little long, it's nine minutes, we're hoping to tailor them down to probably three or four minutes, so we're learning. But, we do think it's pretty vital for everyone to see things, we've overlaid it with some labels and stuff. And so, I'm going to go ahead and hit play, and we will start this. And if there's anyone listening online, just so you know, it's going to be quiet here, there is no audio to this video. We will have this video posted to our website, so the public will be able to view it after today.
Okay, that concludes the video. Did you have anything else? Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Resolution 24-31. If anyone is on the phone who wish to speak, please press star 3. And we'll start with the phone. No one's on the phone. Okay, so we'll, someone's on the phone, okay. You can go ahead and please state your name and spell your last name for us.
My name is Greg Sinnt, S-I-N-D-T. My wife Patty is a general partner in a family partnership that owns property north of the proposed gravel pit, the Lomond Olsen Family LLP. We submitted an October 28 letter and a January 31 letter with a suggestion for the construction of the Southern Route Ingstrom to Trunk Road Connector as a condition for approval of the Central Gravel Products Conditional Use Permit. This connector road location was included in the 2021 Transportation Infrastructure Package as approved by the Planning Commission in June 2021, and approved by voters in November 2021. Southern Route would eliminate the need for construction of the alternative Northern Route under consideration across our property, which we strongly oppose. It appears that the borough staff failed to acknowledge and consider the gravel pit developers' willingness to sell right-of-way property and construct a significant portion of the road at low or no cost to borough taxpayers in evaluation. We understand that these concepts were presented by the gravel pit developer to borough staff and other groups, including North Lakes Community Council. We did not find reference to these developers' proposals in the information provided by the borough staff to the Planning Commission for consideration in the Conditional Use Permit Review process. We still think the South Route Connector Road should be constructed now. This provides the benefits of improved traffic safety early in the gravel pit projected development, and reduce borough project costs for Connector Road right-of-way acquisition and construction costs. We request the Planning Commission consider this information regarding the developers' willingness to negotiate right-of-way purchase and road construction as it reviews the Conditional Use Permit application. It appears this information may not have been adequately presented to the commission, and the commission may not have realized the potential significant economic and traffic safety benefits of including provisions for the Southern Route Connector Road details in the Conditional Use Permit now, rather than trying to negotiate right-of-way purchase and bear the entire cost for construction of the road in the future. If the Southern Route Connector is not constructed now, we request the Planning Commission, at a minimum, require future negotiation and purchase right-of-way at a fair price from the proposed gravel pit property owners for the construction of the Southern Route Connector Road as a condition of the Conditional Use Permit. Thanks for your consideration for this request.
Thank you very much, and just so everyone's aware, we and the commission did receive a handout with that information. So, we do have that information as part of our packet. But, thank you very much for bringing that up. Is there anyone else on the phone? Okay, we will go ahead and move to the audience, and the first person on the list is Dave Cruz. Could you please come up and give us your name for the record and spell your last name?
Name's Dave Cruz.
Could you please turn on the microphone? Just hit the button, there you go.
My name is Dave Cruz, C-R-U-Z. I am a longtime valley resident, I've been in the construction industry for 40 years as an owner of a construction company, I'm very familiar with gravel pits, gravel pit operations, and do not have a pit operation in the valley, but I have it in Western Alaska, as well as on different, many different highway jobs, we have to operate a gravel pit that's usually owner-supplied, the location, but we fall under the scrutiny of MSHA. So for the benefit of the committee here, gravel pits are not regulated by the state of Alaska. Gravel pits are regulated by Mine Safety Health Administration, it's a federal organization, it's very similar to Federal Aviation or Federal Environmental Protection. They're not your friends, they're not there to come and see you and have coffee, and well, let's see how we can help you. They're for one, they're for one reason, is to regulate your operation to meet the requirements that they have. So, in, with this company here, I've thought, well, I'm going to go and pull their MSHA logs. And that's what a lot of people that want to find out, okay, is this operator a good operator or not? So I pulled the MSHA logs myself, took a while to get through the maze of federal bureaucracy, but it's very rare that you find a company that's been in business for 10 years that does not have an MSHA violation, accident, a large fine for environmental damage, dust, what have you. All facets of what Central Gravel has done is regulated there, that's exemplary. You don't see that. I wish I had that good of a record. So when you have, you know, any kind of dust that is moving, that could affect neighbors and that, that's where MSHA regulations kick in. Slopes, back slopes, you can't have cut bings, you've got to restore this. You know, you have all this responsibility to a federal agency. And in looking at their logs, and you're welcome to go look at this, they've operated 10 years, that is unbelievable in my industry. So, so I want to bring that, that gives you the mindset of the owners and what they've proven. So everybody has their nice clothes on today, and hey, give us a chance on this next 223 acres, I just say, look at the history of them for 10 years. You have a company that has performed, and it's well-run, and I encourage you to support this conditional, Resolution 24-31, and approve their application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Dave, I believe it is Cordee, C-O-R-D-I-E. Please state your name, and if I spelled it incorrectly, please let me know.
Dave Cordee, D-A-V-E, C-O-R-D-I-E. Like to thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of Central Gravel Products. I've been Alaska resident for approximately 20 years, I came from the state of Minnesota, I had a family-run construction company down there for 25-plus years. I can attest to, I've always been a champion of small business, family-run businesses. That's exactly what Central Gravel Products is. When Mr. Loughlin stood up here and told you about a large company coming in, buying up all the product, I can attest to that, that happened in southeast Minnesota. We had a large conglomerate construction company that came in from the Chicago area. They bought up every single sand pit, gravel pit, within 150-mile radius of Rochester, Minnesota. Everybody paid for that. Blacktop went up, concrete increased, every road project increased. Mr. Loughlin said, people with pickup trucks pulling in to get product, no way. You didn't even step foot on their properties. That's exactly what will happen. Not if, it will happen. Money speaks, I know we're in Alaska, but I guarantee you, it will happen. And the little guys that want to go get a pickup load of gravel, that want to fix our driveways, we want to get a bucket of sand, we want to get a bucket of gravel, it's not going to happen. I guarantee you. I've known Jade and Kelly for approximately eight-plus years. I've always been impressed with their operations, always been impressed. Like Jade said, no junk sitting around, no garbage. Truck drivers coming in, not racing off with a load. I've seen him, I've actually seen Jade chase people down because they've overloaded their trailers, wanted more product than they could go out on the road. He didn't want them to break an axle out on the road. He made them come back, take product off before he let them leave. You don't see that nowadays, very often, what you do with these two folks. That's very unusual, very unusual. And I think it would be a huge mistake if you don't allow these folks to continue their operation for everybody in this room. I can attest, people, I know there's neighbors here that are probably gonna be upset about the trucks. I understand you folks had a plan for that. I guarantee you, it would be much easier to talk to these two folks at the table than we'll be a conglomerate. They have nothing but money, and they have nothing but lawyers. And that's the last thing we want in the state of Alaska. That's what they get in Lower 48. We don't want those problems up here. And you will have those problems if you allow these large companies to come up and take all of our materials, our natural resources. Please, let these folks continue their business. They're good operators. They'll continue in the future. They've got great people working for them that will continue past that. I know Jade's gonna be an old man, so I don't think he's gonna be around forever. So sooner or later, he's gotta get out, so... But allow them to continue this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joel Stefanski.
Last name S-T-E-F-A-N-S-K-I. I'd like to start with, I support the approval of Resolution 24-31. I support the approval of conditional use permit for Central Gravel Products. With that said, I lived about a mile from the pit for over 40 years. And I've been a contractor for over 40 years in the state, and on three commercial trucks. I don't do any gravel commercially, but I've gotten, I've received product from Central Gravel over the years. I've built a house for my daughter off a gold pan there. There's a reason why it's called Central Gravel, because it is centrally located. And we don't want trucks coming in from 20 miles away. We have the answer right here. Just kitty corner from the present pit. I knew the old owners, Nikki and Mark... What's Mark's last name? Loomis. And so I've been here longer than that original pit. And, and it has been a really godsend for the community, whether you're buying topsoil, driveway topping, sewer rock. Like I said, it was still the fastest growing. We've been the fastest-growing area since the early 90s, and we're gonna continue on doing that. But this continuation of this, expansion of this pit to the north of the existing pit is definitely a must to keep down the truck traffic. Some of the issues that come up, the drifting, you know, that's the borough and the state's issue. The, the road, I waited 30 years for the new trunk road to be built. You know, if, if government would move a little faster, they haven't done anything with the drifting on Ingstrom ever. And I find it kind of interesting that we're putting that on a potential gravel operation when the borough and the state should have taken care of that years ago. And same with the traffic flow. Those roundabouts, growing up in New England, we've had roundabouts for a hundred-something years. Took Alaska a little while to figure out things. But they're a wonderful addition. And to kind of parallel Mr. Cruz's comment, the operation is first-class, it's clean. He, he follows all OSHA and ANSI requirements. It's a well-run machine, doesn't have all kinds of junk hanging out in his pit. The, he probably has about a half dozen families that depend on that pit, sitting behind us here. And I highly recommend that we keep on extending this permit and approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next on the list, Neil Nardini. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Is it on?
Yep.
All right, Neil Nardini, N-A-R-D-I-N-I. Just came here, I'm a, I have a property, sort of kitty corner to where the new property's gonna be. I've also been a general contractor. I live about a mile from the old pit and hopefully from the new pit. I've gotten to know Jade and Kelly pretty well. They're actually, like everybody's said so far, they're, it's probably the cleanest gravel pit I've ever seen. There's, you know, they do a great job taking care of it. Sort of odd to know the first names of local gravel pit owners. They're that kind of, you know, local citizen. And I recommend that we allow this to go through just because as good as they've been in the past and what we expect them to be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Eric, and I can't spell the last name. Starts with the letter C. What is it? Coopley? Okay, is, if there is an Eric. If not, I'll go ahead to the next name. I don't see an Eric. Okay, next one is Verdi Bowen. Hi, Verdi, please spell your name for us.
I'm Verdi Bowen, my last name is B-O-W-E-N. You know, I was, I was actually gonna decline to speak. I've already sent in my statements, you know, about vulnerable groups. I really am concerned about vulnerable groups dealing with silica, but we'll just leave that off to the side. I am concerned about the stream. You know, if someone's gonna start discussing how many feet is 100 feet in accordance to wetlands, I think that's a little bit concerning to me. I think that with this vast amount of property, I think that any buffer zone coming close to that stream's really important. And if there's any runoff, whatever, coming from this property that does any damage to Wasilla Creek, that's not a very good idea. And I know that the gravel pit owners are gonna do a great job on their side of the, of the fence here, but that's sort of, just sort of, that's sort of disconcerting to me to have that as an issue, that we're talking about 100 feet. Maybe there might be 25 feet total that might be the difference between where the wetland starts or where the wetland begins, or where it might be or it might not be in accordance to whoever's plan that they're seeing. That's really starting to get into something that really concerns me. Because if that's an issue today, where's it gonna be when you have another issue that could be even bigger than that? That's, that should have been not an issue whatsoever where those, where those plans are at. It should have already been just preset. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, let it show that Commissioner Fernandez arrived in person at 6:57. Next on the list is William Monroe. Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
My name's William Monroe, M-U-N-R-O. I have been an employee of Central Gravel Products since 2019. Would like to say it's just, it's a first-class operation. It's provided for my family and many others. For worries of dust, we make sure we water roads, keep all the dust down. Mr. Bowen just mentioned worry about runoff. We don't have any wash plants that run a bunch of water. It's, I would say that, that wouldn't necessarily be a worry. And we abide by all MSHA rules. It's, it's a first-class operation. And I ask you guys to approve it for my family and many others. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Jacob Brown.
My name is Jacob Brown, B-R-O-W-N.
Thank you.
I'm a local Palmer resident, and I've done a lot of business with Central Gravel over the last couple of years. And I can attest, just like everybody else here, that they run a first-class operation. And, I mean, I go out of my way to make sure to use them. And they provide the best quality products, the best service. They really care about the community. And I'm in full support of, of this being passed, so...
Okay, thank you. Rod Hanson. Rod, will you be speaking for the community council? So we'll give you five minutes.
I'll try not to use at all. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rod Hanson.
Hang on just a second, let's make sure we get your time in there. Okay.
Okay. So my name is Rod Hanson, President of the North Lakes Community Council. I trust you've seen our Resolution 24-002 dated October 28th. It starts on page 805 of your meeting packet. I can't imagine how you deal with 1,000 pages of information. Our resolution summarizes a number of concerns from area residents affected by the proposed gravel operation. It also, though, acknowledges the right of property owners to develop their properties as they see fit, generate income for their families. And as long as they're complying with state and borough code requirements, you know, that's not a right we would want to stand in front of. We do go on in the resolution to acknowledge the positive reputation you've heard about from others tonight with regard to Central Gravel. They enjoy a great reputation locally. And we certainly appreciate Jade and, and his team, you know, for coming over and spending time to understand the concerns that we had at a community council meeting, a couple of them actually. And, and then work over the last several months to really mitigate many of those concerns. We made several recommendations that we see now incorporated into the updated development plan that's before you tonight, particularly the buffer berm that sits 200 feet east of Ingstrom, full length of that side of the property. And that should, you know, do a lot to address not only the sight picture, but noise, dust, and probably solve the borough's snow drifting problem while they're at it. Our most pressing concern is the safety impact of a new driveway onto Bogard Road in what is the most congested section of that Bogard-Selden corridor. As was testified earlier here by the developer tonight, the, the state has approved a driveway permit onto Bogard Road. But they've done a lot, the state has done a lot to establish, you know, some good measures to make that as safe, as intersection as it can be for drivers passing through the area. And, and I actually, I don't feel like I should summarize it, but I, I think maybe one of the Commissioners could ask a question during discussion to maybe have staff elaborate a little bit on what the state is requiring. I think it's important for the public to hear those conditions of approval that the state will apply to that driveway connection. So that is our most pressing concern. We do acknowledge the, you know, we would have preferred not to see a driveway onto Bogard. And we had really hoped that the borough would have negotiated a cost-effective agreement for right-of-way acquisition and for construction of a connecting road through the Haba Meister and Kircher properties between Ingstrom and Trunk. As, as Peggy had mentioned, and really in spite of what you might have otherwise seen or heard, that decision is not made. The Northern versus Southern Route decision is still a decision that the borough and their staff and their engineering consultants are working on. It's undergoing engineering analysis. It's gonna go through a public review process. We'll have the opportunity to, to stay involved. And ultimately, I'm not sure who makes that decision, but it's definitely still in play as to whether the road will be constructed on the southern alignment through the Haba Meister property and Kircher property, or whether it'll be some other northern option. So as such, our position tonight is to support this conditional use permit. We are, as was mentioned by Peggy earlier, we are asking that the Planning Commission add a simple condition of approval, requiring that Central Gravel Products move their primary driveway from Bogard to a new connector if and when that connector was ever constructed. On the third page in your attachments tab, you'll find some language we've recommended for that pretty basic condition of approval. And it sounds like maybe Borough Staff has some recommendations on language as well. The NLCC will stay actively engaged with Borough Planning and Public Works as a final decision on the Ingstrom-Trunk Connector Road is made. We have previously, and will continue to testify before the Borough Assembly about the importance of this connector road. And we will continue to advocate for the best decision that balances traffic flow objectives, safety, and responsible stewardship of our taxpayer dollars. Please consider the proposed condition of approval that we suggested this evening. But we do support approval of the, of the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Next on the list is Craig Nelson.
Hi, my name's Craig Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. I'm the owner of Nelson &amp; Company Escavation. My family's been utilizing Central Gravel since it's open. It's a good asset to the community. It could serve it well. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list is Carter DeBach. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commission members. My name is Carter DeBach, D-E-B-A-C-H. And I'm here because I wanted to say I support the application. I believe with growing Matsu Borough, over 100,000 residents, we definitely need more gravel pits. There's a couple of reasons why I support their application. Firstly, is their pricing. They're, I think this last year, they're charging like 650 yard. It might go up a little bit, but the price is fantastic. You go in there, it's a good, good price for a really good product. It's a family-oriented business. You can go in there. I saw, I personally saw Kelly with a five-gallon bucket helping out, little woman, fill it up, which is fantastic. Another reason is the location. So Central Gravel Products is centrally located. They serve, they're all the way from Lazy Mountain, Bogard, Selden, Fairview Loop, Sutton. And it's, it's great being right there in the middle of the Matsu Borough. We don't want trucks rolling all the way from the outskirts of town to come in to bring in some gravel. And then last thing is, yes, Jade and Kelly, Central Gravel Products as a whole, they abide by what they say they're gonna do. So a long time ago, I was a dump truck driver for them, and they, they followed the rules and regulations. I remember, I was a young 20-year-old, and I jumped out of my dump truck in their yard, and Jade comes up to me, get back in your truck right now. And at the time, I was like, man, he's, you know, overreacting. But now, you know, I look back, it's, it was for my safety and for the safety of others. Right? Those are, those are MSHA rules. And they just do everything right by the book. You know, if they say they're gonna put up a nice berm along Ingstrom, then, and to prevent snow from drifting over, prevent that, you know, screenability, then they're gonna do it, and they're not gonna do just some little six-foot berm. It's gonna be a nice 10-foot berm. It's gonna prevent that snow from rolling over and clogging up Ingstrom. I have family that, they live up Ingstrom, and they, they have to deal with that berm. So, you know, it's a private business, taking care of a public issue. So they're gonna follow the rules, really good prices, family-oriented, centrally located. I support this permit, and I hope it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Morgan Baker.
I'm Morgan Baker, B-A-K-E-R. Say I support the, the operation going here. Jade, Jade and Kelly, they're, they're honest folks, you know. And I'm not the youngest guy, but a couple of years ago, I tried to do my own thing, and they, they gave me a chance, you know. And it's just a handshake. It was just no, no application. It's just nothing like this, a handshake. I'm, I'm gonna do my best. And they see where I struggle, they, they give me pointers, they, they help me out. And little things too, like last year, towards the back of the pit there, we had this little family of foxes, you know. And Jade Kelly's out there, ropes off this whole zone and re-avert all the traffic around, take the long way through the pit just to protect these, you know, a couple of little kits running around. And through the summary, next thing you know, you see two kits running out here, three kits running through the pit. And, you know, all right, the fox on the radios, you know, everyone's got the same radio, all right, the foxes are out, everybody drives slow. They're just really aware of, of their surroundings, their, their neighbors, the, the people they employ. And, yeah, they just want everybody to do their best. And then you see little hiccups, like, you know, 50, 60, 70 people here to support them, and I think that means a lot.
All right, thank you. Justin Short.
My name is Justin Short, S-H-O-R-T. I just wanted to start off by saying I support Jade and Kelly and their endeavors in getting this gravel pit going forward and supporting the future of the community. And I kind of wanted to touch base on my history. I drove school bus for several years. I drove school bus for several years, and your concern about the impedance of traffic in school bus times, the majority of school buses will be coming from Trunk Road over to Bogard utilizing a roundabout, and with the new proposed driveway being on the other side, I, I think in my eyes, with some common sense, think that it'll have actually less of an impact of school bus and parent traffic slowing things down for, for the colony schools.
Okay, thank you. Is there Alan Shepard? Okay. Phil Mark Ward? I'm sorry if I said it wrong.
My name is Phil Mark Ward, last name is Mark, M-A-R-K, Ward, W-A-R-D, with a T at the end. And I've lived in the valley steadily since 1990. Currently, we live a couple of miles up Engstrom Road, and one of the things that I found out recently, and I maybe didn't read the whole thing before that, is that the valley floor of the gravel pit does not need to reclaimed until the entire, the project is completed, which in this case, I believe is 30 years. And I would like to see the opportunity for reclamation on the valley floor to take place perhaps in stages, so that we don't, you don't have the entire acreage just left as a gravel pit. I understand they don't have any plans long-term now, but it would be great if they had some sort of idea of what they wanted to do there, so that the planning for the 30 years of the gravel pit would also include planning for, okay, what's going to take place after that, what's it going to look like? And I know that you probably don't have any authority over this, but it would be nice for these large tracts of land that are gradually disappearing in the valley, if there were opportunities for tax breaks for those, obviously, that are still using it as farming, which is very little, or even those that aren't using the land right now, so they don't feel forced to have to do something else with the land that might not be what they would originally plan on doing. And so, that would be the main recommendation that I would have, is being able to, to divide up the planning for that in segments, so that it's not just all one huge area before it's done, which would include quite a few acres of gravel floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Not at this time, we are in public hearing. Sorry, I, I'll give you an opportunity after.
Good evening, thank you for your time. Just a few quick points, that was, my dad just spoke, and I agree, just, reclamation is a huge thing. Since we live in the valley, we are all here for the quality of life, and we're here for the beauty, and I hear great things about the company. I've heard nothing but good things about the company from people I trust, so that says a lot. I just wanted to ensure that in the future, after the gravel pit is gone, that there are reclamation policies in place or ideas in place. I'm also concerned about vehicle safety, it does sound like there are works in the plans, however, since I do live back on Engstrom and drive into Bogard every day, that, as we all know, is a horrible intersection, and I think vehicle safety cannot be high enough in terms of the list of things that we need to look at before a full approval is given. In terms of water quality, I'm also concerned about the 100 feet, just because water quality is obviously huge, just to ensure that the 100-foot buffer is in place. And then, the tree, the buffer as far as Engstrom, I'm not certain about the plans for any sort of buffer before Engstrom. As everyone in the valley knows, that area becomes kind of like an asteroid belt in the winter, when the winds blow, and so just to have a buffer there in terms of whether it's trees or whether it's a berm, but something to make certain that, that asteroid belt is somewhat mitigated. Thank you for your time.
This is the hardest part of being the chair, is reading the names, just so you all know Do you have a clue on that? It could be Rudy, is there a Rudy? Okay, and it's not your writing, it's my reading.
My name is Rudy, and you did well not to try that last name, it's Poglitsh, P-O-G-L-I-T-S-H. I only have two points. One is, I do live about a mile off that intersection of Bogard and Engstrom, and I don't, I just don't know what, in fact, the gravel pit would have on this long-promised roundabout, but I have five kids, and I don't even trust myself on a bicycle down Engstrom, and especially not that intersection, so I just don't know what, what influence that would have, but we're looking forward to that roundabout at some point. Also, it would be nice, it was mentioned in earlier on, if there were a southern access, southern route, that would take some pressure off of Engstrom, make it a little safer, and also when the snow dries, but it sounds like maybe the berm would take care of the snowdrift. So some other way over to Trunk that would, would take the pressure off Engstrom, make it a safer intersection. Thanks very much.
Is there a Spencer? Okay.
My name's Spencer Audie, A-U-D-I-E.
Thank you.
Certainly not opposed to a gravel pit necessarily, that location, concerns being predominantly traffic and a missed opportunity to secure a right-of-way for a southern route for a Trunk Engstrom corridor. We should have previously eliminated a right-of-way for a northern route, and we're whittling down to taking over this other large tract to put in a northern route, and we have a good option here for, for a southern route, which provides access, safe access for a gravel pit, offloads pressure for Engstrom Road, and then also offloads putting this proposed northern route across an airstrip that's going to have an issue with it. I just would encourage to go ahead with the gravel pit, but to include a southern access.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Is there anyone else who was not signed up that would like to speak? Come on up. Again, just state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Jim Klauder, it's K-L-A-U-D-E-R. So I think the traffic has been downplayed a lot on this operation, proposed operation. In the updated application materials on your website, there's correspondence from Steiner Design and Construction Services dated 1/21 of January, 25. It states 230,000 cubic yards per year, and the season start date of May 1st ending November 1st. The hours of operation would be 8:00 to 5:30. Their proposed peak of traffic would be 11:00 AM with 24 trips, 12 trucks in, 12 trucks The math doesn't add up. 230,000 cubic yards equals 23,000 10-yard truckloads per year. The 1st of May to November 1st is 26 weeks, 6 days a week, 156 days. That works out to 147 trucks per day on Bogard Road and Engstrom Road. 147 in and 147 out, so 294 trips. This is an average of 15 trucks per hour in this nine-and-a-half-hour day. That is 30 trips per hour. That's a truck every four minutes on Bogard and Engstrom Road. If they're open longer, say 40 weeks a year, would still be 95 trucks a day with a lot per hour and minute. This is not my only concern either. Airborne particulates. We live in a windy area, and there's dust from trucks, dust from extraction, all being blown downwind into a residential area. Their proposed dust control is vegetation and water trucks. The water trucks will operate during business hours, but the wind doesn't stop at quitting We all get wind-blown dust in our houses now that the existing vegetation does not eliminate. I think those are two gigantic problems with the location of this gravel pit. I'm not necessarily against gravel pits, or especially not against Central Gravel, it's just this location, especially the traffic on an area that is already terrible for traffic. It's one of our worst intersections is Bogard and Engstrom Road, and I think a lot more thought has to be put into that before this is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up. You can be next.
Hi, my name's Tessa Reimer, last name is R-E-I-M-E-R. I'm coming more from the personal side. I'm a cousin of the Havemeisters. My two aunts married the two Havemeister brothers. I think a big part of this is, it would be able to keep the farm and the land within my cousin's family. They're originally colonists. I know, you know, if everyone had their way, in a perfect world, it wouldn't have to be a gravel pit, and it could stay farmland, but economy is the way it is in life and taking care of elderly parents, and I think approving this so that it can stay within the family, and a family that's been here for a very long time, they have a very vested interest in the valley and the farming communities as well. I know the gravel pit owners are great owners and are also local, and I just think it'd be meaningful to be able to keep this in the family rather than it get potentially sold and utilized in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patrick Moran, M-O-R-I-N, and I would just like to say, number one, I, I live in the valley, I buy gravel, and it's the cheapest place around, Central Gravel, and it's the closest, and I've worked with these guys for a long time. I worked back when Nicky was the owner, and it's, it's just amazing to see how we can help the community, and part of the ways that we help the community is, well, so I'll address a few things. The number of the trucks that are coming and going with that gravel, whether it's coming out of that gravel pit or anywhere else in the state, you're still going to have people up Engstrom that need the gravel, so it's going to be the exact same amount of dump trucks, it's just going to cost all the people up Engstrom, I'd guess, an easy estimate of 10 times the amount because of the trucking costs, and the gravel's going to go up also. And so, and it also, it's going to alleviate being, they're just moving from one corner of the Trunk Road there to the other, and so the other gravel pit's almost done, that's going to alleviate all that gravel hauling, all the trucks that are going, coming and going from up by colony, so it's just going to move across the street, so there's not going to be any more trucks, so to speak, because you only can buy what you can buy, what people can afford. And the dust, we live in a valley that if you look around, any given day, there is dust coming from all over the place, and you don't see it coming straight out of Central Gravel, so the dust is just something that we have to live with, the traffic, oh, and then the wetlands. We're not going to mine where the wetlands are, there's no gravel there, and we definitely ain't going to try to go under the creek and get stuff. I would imagine if you would put another 200-foot limit, these guys wouldn't care because they're not going to try to pull gravel where there's not gravel at, so that's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on up.
Ashley Carlson, A-S-H-L-E-E-C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I think you ask anyone if they want a gravel pit in their backyard, the answer is no. But if you're going to have one, I got to say, the owners here have done a great job of addressing a lot of the community's concerns, as I believe Dan said as well. I just want to say I don't want to get lost in the shuffle that Peggy had mentioned, that there is a way of adding language for that southern access. And again, if you don't want a gravel yard in your backyard, you really don't want the traffic. And as everyone here should know, that Selden, that Engstrom to Bogard is horrible, and if you can put language into this permit now, that allows us to address that once hopefully that southern access is approved, I think that's something that we could do here that helps the future. I just want to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Justin Metcalfe, M-E-T-C-A-L-F. I am the owner of Dirt Pour Excavation, and I work closely with Central Gravel, Jaden Kelly. Few things I wanted to point out on the character of Jaden Kelly, to alleviate maybe some concerns moving to this new location. The location currently that they operate out of, if you look at the overhead map, they, in recent years, they have surveyed the property and dug out almost two of those lines. There were some concerned property owners backing their current property that shared their concerns with Jaden Kelly, and Jaden Kelly heard them, and they have, if you look at the overhead map, you could see that Jaden Kelly have not cleared a lot of those trees around their property. I have had the opportunity to deliver to several people, Gold Star Moms who have lost their, their sons in combat, and baseball, baseball teams that have been looking for sand to level out their property or level out their baseball fields, and when Jaden Kelly hear that, their first thing is to comp the product that they deliver. That's one reason I like working with them, is they care for their community. And I'm happy to say that I also comp my trucking time, which is probably more expensive than their, their gravel. It's something that we do in conjunction with each other to help the community out. One thing I would say for those who are worried about the, the Engstrom, the Engstrom traffic, we do a lot of deliveries up Engstrom, and there, there's a lot of homes, a lot of customers that need gravel up there, and the one thing I would say to help alleviate that is maybe make an exit to Engstrom to go up there, because if we are going through that Engstrom and Bogard intersection, it's only going to clog it up that much more. Also, to, to close, one more thing. I just bought five loads, 50 yards of septic rock just a couple of days ago, from a different gravel company. It was twice the price of what Jaden Kelly offer their septic rock for. They, it is a business, but they, they care about the people they serve, and they, they try to make it convenient for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you want, if you guys want to just form a line, we could find out how many we're going to have here, that would be okay.
Hello, my name's Tyler Marie, M-A-R-Y-E. I have bought gravel from you guys before, it was a great experience. My only two cents on the subject was I saw you kind of engage with the phased reclamation. You know, my bid, my, my points now are my own, I won't say that too, but I work with mines across the state, gravel, plaster, hard rock. That phased reclamation can do wonders to store the land, so with that, you know, we can have positive economic So with that, you know, we can have positive economic benefits and also restore the land or reclaim the land to better conditions or the same conditions. So I do encourage that when you can. You know, keeping a little bit of topsoil will really go a long ways to help the area re-vegetate and help also keep that dust down for future things. But no matter what happens, I'll still support you guys and I'll still buy gravel. So thank you guys so much. Take care.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mike Rolston, owner of Northern Dirt Works.
Can you spell your last name for us, please?
R-O-L-S-T-O-N.
Thank you.
Um, I think it's pretty obvious by this point that, that Jaden Kelly run a, run a great gravel pit. And, and I can attest to just going to pretty much every gravel pit in the valley. They run the best gravel pit in the valley. It's, it's clean, it's, it's organized, it's, it really is a good gravel pit. You know, as far as, you know, water runoff, if you go in a gravel pit, especially theirs, and I encourage anybody to go drive through it during the summertime when, when they're operating, there is no runoff. It's, it's a gravel pit. It goes, the water goes straight in the ground. We really need more gravel pits in the valley. We really need to issue some more permits. Pretty much every gravel pit in the valley is, is out of gravel or really close to being out of gravel. If we don't start issuing more permits, gravel's going to go up substantially in trucking fees and in price. Like, like everybody has said, Jade offers his product at a really good price. And it's essentially located, like the, like the name says. Material, whether it's topsoil, gravel, septic rock, whatever it is, is going to go up three, four hundred percent at least if we don't start getting gravel pits somewhere. And this is a great one to, to approve. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's it. Last call. Okay. Great comments. All right, so I will, um, before I close this, is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Are there any objections to closing public testimony for the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none? Public testimony is closed. Okay. Ms. Horton, would you, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I don't.
Is there anyone that has questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to add anything? This is your time.
Um, both myself and the owner would like to make a statement, I guess. I, I would like to maybe address some of the concerns that were brought forward. One was concerned about wetland delineation. We, we will be doing that. When we were asked to do that, it was early last winter, which is, is really not, almost impossible to do wetland delineation in the winter. But we'll, we'll make sure that's taken care of, um, as soon as we get started. That area that's over by the creek will not be, um, developed as, as gravel extraction for a number of years. So we, we do have a little bit of time to, to establish all that. And I apologize if I missed some of the concerns. Uh, someone talked about reclamation and I, I'm, I'm not sure how this got presented, but we are required by, uh, the Department of Natural Resources to submit a reclamation plan, which we've done that, they've approved it, and it is done in phases. So that the plan is not to have more than ten acres disturbed at one time. As, as that area begins to begin, uh, to be depleted, additional land will be, um, opened up for gravel and soil extraction. While that takes place, the, the, the land that is no longer being extracted from will be reclaimed. And that reclamation plan includes spreading topsoil and seeding. And so, um, we, there will not be, you know, a hundred acre area that's just open gravel. It will be, uh, ten acre chunks that are done at a time and it will be reclaimed as we, as they move around. And, and one of the, one of the plans that was, one of the sheets was submitted to the borough is the reclamation plan. It was the same plan that was approved by DNR. So, um, hopefully that, uh, addresses that. Water quality, uh, we are required, because of the size of the project, to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan. That has been done. Um, the, the, the plan has been approved. It has not yet been submitted to, uh, uh, the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation because we're not ready yet to begin construction. But before construction can begin, that plan will be submitted. We will submit a notice of intent, uh, with, with, um, DEC to make them aware of the project. And, and as, as part of, um, the way the gravel pit is operated, the stormwater pollution prevention plan is implemented and maintained year round. So, and, and, and part of that might be winter construction or, or winter closures. That's, that's, but that's part of the, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan. And, and the, the intent of that is to preserve water quality. And, um, and not just water quality, air quality. It deals with, with dust, it deals with runoff, if there is any. Uh, it deals with, uh, fuel spills, if there's any. So it, it encompasses, um, you know, protecting the environment of, of the site. So, um, someone asked, uh, there was concern, uh, about the berm along Engstrom. That, that is part of the plan. It was designed and located so that it could also act as a, um, snow fence. Uh, this, a, a berm is actually, um, not the, um, the most efficient type of snow fence. Uh, but we placed it so that, um, the snow that builds up behind it, let me back up a little bit. When, when you use a snow fence, it, it can only capture a certain amount of snow behind it. And then the, the drift, uh, is mature. And when it reaches that, then snow will continue to blow beyond that. So we, we placed the, the berm so that when the, the snowdrift matures behind the berm that's acting as a snow fence, it will be, it should still be at least fifty feet away from the right of way. It, uh, depending on the volume of snow, it may not prevent, um, drifting onto Engstrom, but it will not make it worse. It, if anything, it should make it better because some of that snow that used to end up on Engstrom will now be captured behind the, uh, the berm. Let's see. Uh, someone, someone was concerned about the volume of, of trucks and the, the volume of gravel. Please keep in mind that along with, with end dumps, there are also side dumps which carry twice as much. The, the volume of gravel that we estimated would be taken out every year, and it is an estimate, is very similar to what they take out now. So we, we hope that our numbers are. Let's see. The, the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, some of the requirements for us, that, that DOT asked us to do to have the, uh, the driveway on Bogart Road. There are currently three driveways along Bogart Road that access this. And in addition to that, there is a coffee shop, um, a coffee stand there that is not permitted with DOT for driveway. So if, if you include the two that are for that, there are five driveways right now along, um, along Engstrom. As part of the requirements, um, to get our DOT driveway permit, two of the existing driveways will go away and the coffee shop will be eliminated. So we will go from five driveways to two driveways. One of those being the driveway that goes to the, uh, to the gravel pit. The other one will go to the residential homes that will be remaining, um, at the site. Also, as part of that, um, uh, they were concerned about when, when is the roundabout supposed to happen? As, as part of our driveway permit and in discussions with DOT that they told us that it should, construction will start this, this year, next, next year. And within two years after that, it should be completed. Right now, the, for, for trucks that are going to go onto Bogart, right now, without a roundabout at Engstrom, one, one of the best things that they could do to, to not make things worse is to be able to turn left or right. If, if we were, if we were required to only turn right before the roundabout is in, trucks would turn right and then they would be immediately looking for a way to turn left, to turn around and go the other direction. Which means you've got a truck on the road, stopping, waiting for traffic to clear, backing up truck, traffic behind it. So as, as part of the, uh, the driveway permit, until the roundabout is built, we're, if, if trucks want to make a right turn out, we are required to have flaggers out there to stop traffic, to make it safe. Is that right? Oh, sorry, for a left-hand turn. Once the roundabout is in, then they are limited to right turn only. And, and we will build an island, it's referred to as a pork chop. It's kind of a, um, industry term. But it will be kind of a triangle-shaped island. So trucks will only be able to turn in, um, right, and then they will exit right. And then if they, if they want to go left, then they can go around and easily make the U-turn at the roundabout. So, so the way that DOT has, has set up this permit, it actually decreases the volume of traffic because we're getting rid of the truck, the, the coffee shop. The volume of traffic, um, that we estimated is based on years of traffic data that Central Gravel Products currently keeps. And so we, we found their, their highest days, and that's what we use for our, for our traffic counts. And they, and, and the plan is, again, for them to operate the new gravel pit just like the old gravel pit is, is operated. So we, we anticipate that the traffic, the traffic count should be the same. I am concerned that this driveway being available is tied to a road that may or may not happen in the future. And I'm not sure that, that, that directing all the traffic to either trunk or, or Engstrom is, is a better solution than what we have right now with access off of Bogart. And something that no one seems to bring up is we do have access as, as part of this project now off of Engstrom, but it will be an in-only. So trucks, there won't be trucks, um, turning onto Engstrom, you know, that are going slow, holding up traffic, trying to get up to speed. They will only be able to exit out of Bogart. So by the time, if they make it to Engstrom, they'll be like any other car. Well, not any other car, but they'll have similar conditions. They'll be turning onto Engstrom at a lower speed and then they will be accelerating like, like typically happens instead of having a truck go onto Engstrom that's slower and stopping traffic behind it. Also, I have faith in DOT, I guess. If, if they think this is safe and they're allowing us to do this, I think that we should allow them to make decisions for their right of way instead of having this, um, decision for a driveway be tied to a project that, that sounds like it's probably going to happen, but we don't know when. So we, we really hope that that is not one of the conditions for the, for the conditional use permit, that that driveway, that that driveway be eliminated if, if a south route is, is ever constructed. And then Jade, did you want, did you have some things you wanted to address?
So Dan addressed a lot of the things that I was going to address, but a few of them, one of the things that I, I don't know if a lot of people realize, but, uh, the Engstrom inbound only, uh, driveway is my idea. It's not the borough's idea. That was my suggestion to help, you know, with our, with our safe, you know, keep the roads safer, especially that Engstrom area. When we first initially met with the, with, uh, the borough, the placement of the, the berm along Engstrom was again, my idea to help with the snowdrift. You know, I'm, I see all these problems in the valley that, that we as a community need to work on together. We can't rely just on our government. We have to rely on each other and we have to rely on some common sense when it comes to these projects. So if we can do something that eliminates a problem, why wouldn't we do it? You know, so again, this was another thing that we, we suggested to the borough and that we're willing to do. We're happy to do it. The, the creek along Wasilla Creek, I agree with you guys. It's, it's, the runoff to that is, is a very much a dramatic concern. But the way, and, and it's very difficult here because there, I can't give you guys a visual, but there's a natural valley that runs along that creek. That's probably about two hundred feet from that creek. We're never going to disturb a tree or anything along, along that area because it's also another beautiful visual buffer. When you're driving down trunk road, you're not going to look in and see anything. So we're, 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 we're very aware of these situations and we're leaving things behind that we could legally go after, but it just doesn't make sense. You know, it's not, it's not worth that little bit of extra to create a nuisance. You know, I, I would rather, I would rather drive down trunk and look at the trees and look at a gravel pit, personally, but we're a necessary evil with our growth and with, with what we have going on right now. In a, in a video that you've seen, the upper field by the lake, we're never going to touch that. That's, that, that is not going to be touched. We have no interest in it. It's, it's not, it's, uh, it's going to stay as it is as long as Havemeisters own it. For a number of reasons, but, uh, one of them is, uh, water level. There's an issue and also the, the lake. So we're, we're never going to be up by that, by that lake. So, um, the south route, which was suggested by the North Lake Community Council, we, we're all in favor of it and we would be happy to help with it. But you guys have to come to an agreement with, with the families. I, I have no say in that. I, I can work on it, I can help with it, but I, I, that's out of my hands. Natural vegetation will be left everywhere we can, but we will, like Dan was saying, we will be doing a phased reclamation as we move through. And if you guys are concerned about that, come by the gravel pit that we currently run and you can see the areas that we've reclaimed as we, as we went through. It's cheaper to reclaim it as we're there than, than to try to come back and do it. So it just makes perfect sense to do it that way. And the last thing is, uh, Mr. Cruz was talking about IMSA. Uh, we've only owned the gravel pit for ten years. It's been there for thirty-five, we've owned it for ten. And we do two, we get two inspections a year. We're heavily regulated. I mean heavily, not just by IMSA, but by DEC, EPA. Just pick a three-letter acronym, it's us. You know, and, um, and we encourage them. We don't, we want safe for our employees and things like that and for our customers that come in. That's, that's in our community as well. But to touch on what Mr. Cruz was saying about our, about our record, IMSA sends other gravel pit owners to us to learn how to operate. You know, what, you know, to learn guarding, to learn, you know, watering, to learn the, the, the things it takes to run a, a clean operation. So IMSA, a federal, you know, like I said, we get two inspections a year at least. And they, they send people to us to learn. Kelly's is the best at the paperwork. So they send, they send people over to learn the paperwork. So we take a lot of pride in that. And as you can tell from the people who've talked to us, we take a lot of pride in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I have one question yet of staff. And is there anything that you can tell us about the north or south routes? Given an update on that at all?
The latest information is on that fact sheet. Page sixty-one of your packet. That's the latest information that I found on our borough website. I did not ask the, um, or actually, uh, in the emails, that Cole Branham responded to the North Lakes Community Council. He said...
Go ahead.
This is Jay Snortes. Uh, we do actually have Tom Adams here, who is the Public Works Director. You might, uh, if you don't mind coming up, Mr. Adams.
Thank you. Any update would be appreciated.
Members of the commission, again, my name's Tom Adams. I'm the Public Works Director from that suburban. You know, Public Works is overseeing a number of different projects in this area, one of which is the Engstrom Trunk Connector. You know, you're, you're probably all fully aware of the massive amount of growth going up in, you know, what we call the, the Fishick Triangle. Um, and our chore is to try to adapt to some of that change and, and try to identify transportation projects that safely move, you know, our population amongst that area. So, you know, specifically to the Engstrom Trunk Road corridor. So, you know, specifically to the Engstrom-Trunk Road corridor, you know, this was nominated as a project by the Assembly and it was passed by the voters in our TIP package in, in 21, TIP 21. Initially, there was a, the nomination was a southern route. And when we started to evaluate the benefits of that southern route, we, we figured we would expand our, our study area to make sure that we're getting the best response or the objective met for the connection and, and moving traffic from the northern area of Engstrom and out to Trunk Road. So, so there's two alternatives now. We did submit a reconnaissance study to the Assembly several months, you know, back, probably closer to a year ago now. And at that time, Public Works' recommendation was to pursue further study of the northern route. And of course, then as we moved forward with that, we started initiating studies, both field studies and, and engineering design of the northern route. You heard earlier tonight from Mr. Sint. He is a landowner that would be potentially affected by this corridor. And in reaction to engagement with, with him and his family, we have decided to further evaluate the northern alternative so that we can try to find a way for the terminus, on the eastern terminus, to take a different route so it might not be as impactful to his property. We are in the midst of reviewing all of that. We have not made a decision as to how that corridor might be revised for the northern alignment and how it might eventually mitigate some of those impacts. But we're, we're still very early in our process to evaluate what's best to serve. Our, from a public work standpoint, our objective is to provide the best corridor improvement for regional traffic, not to solve access for the gravel pit. From our perspective, the southern access doesn't necessarily achieve the objectives on a more regional basis that the northern alignment would. So while that might sound like we're predetermining an answer, we really haven't yet. We're very early in the process. But I would also suggest that making a condition of approval for this applicant that relies on the borough constructing the southern alternative, there is no timeframe for that.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Through the chair here. So what, I mean, we're just in very preliminary, right? On the road, you're, you've just begun to study this idea.
Through the chair.
For this, for this northern access.
Yeah, so through the chair to Mr. Glenn. Yes, I mean, we, this project has actually been, I mean, we have probably more than a year taken, competed in this. Like I said, the, the reconnaissance report was presented to the Assembly probably more than a year ago. But we have been looking at it, but it's still very preliminary. We're talking about a project, either one of those have been estimated greater $10 million. I mean, these are significant road improvement projects that don't have a timeframe for their completion.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman. This is a completely separate, we need to not even think about this. We need to vote on a gravel pit and get on with it.
Thank you for your information. Are there any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 24-31.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 24-31.
Is there a second?
Commissioner McCabe, I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn made the motion for Resolution 24-31 with a second by Commissioner McCabe. Is there any discussion?
Commissioner McCabe, I just have a comment. No matter whether you pick the north or the south route, having a gravel pit nearby will probably help with the cost of those projects.
Good, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this. We, this gravel pit is very important to the central part of the valley here and we need to make sure this gets done. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I, at this time then, if there are no discussion, no other, no other questions, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing none, I am happy to say that this resolution is approved.
I would like to say just one thing. I don't know that I've ever heard so many great comments about a company, especially in these meetings. So it is an honor to be able to approve this in my, in my opinion. Good work.
Okay, we are moving on to new business at this time. I would like to introduce, I would like to introduce a new planning commissioner. I would like to give our new Commissioner Collins this opportunity. Excuse me, we're still having a meeting. Commissioner Collins, we'd like to give you this opportunity to introduce yourself and welcoming you to the commission.
Thank you very much. It's hard to follow that act, that's for sure. Now, my name is Michael Collins. It's a pleasure and an honor to be a part of this commission. Set on previous commissions before, Alaska Retirement Management Board previously, currently sit on the State Board of Nursing as the public seat. And I look forward to working with the body here and the further efforts like today, making sure we're pushing economic progress for the valley and throughout the years to come. Thank you.
On behalf of the Planning Commission, we welcome you. Okay, we are down to commission business. Was there anything that we need to discuss on the list or are we good? Okay, then we will move to director and commissioner comments and we will, let's start on this end. Commissioner Glenn.
I'm glad these guys got their permit and can move forward here. So thank you. Bye.
Commissioner McCabe.
I'd just like to say that a lot of our experiences here are not nearly as fun or positive as what we experienced here today. Thank you all very much for having us stand up business and for doing a good job for the valley.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to change this up a little bit. Commissioner Fernandez.
No comments. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Allen.
Productive meeting today. Thank you, everybody.
And Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, I just, I will just make one com, or a comment on, on everything. One, the community support for small business like Central Gravel here and the impeccable record of the last 10 years dealing with federal agencies, that, that's, that's amazing. And like what was testified earlier was unheard of. So I commend you on those efforts with your business and to continue to do so with the valley. And those that had concerns of, you know, the wetland use and, and traffic access and things like that, those comments and, and you attending to these hearings, that is very important as well. So everything gets discussed, gets brought into full transparency and is considered when these major decisions are being held. So I just want to say thank you for the time and effort it takes to bring those efforts up and support or against that needs to be heard. And I could probably say that it's equally appreciated up here as well. So thank you so much to everyone that testified here.
Okay. Jason, do you have anything?
Yes, welcome, new commissioner. I hope you guys enjoyed the drone footage. We're probably going to have to, maybe we'll, we'll bring them back a little bit on the timeframe there, but hopefully gives a new perspective on, on some of the conditional use permits. You get a different view and angle and perspective there. So kudos to some of the current planning staff that, that worked on that. And keep in mind, this is, still is a quasi judicial matter. So you want to refrain from discussing this until after all appeal time is expired on any type of quasi judicial matter. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, and my comments, excellent meeting. I think the public was served well today. This meeting is adjourned at 8:00 PM.
The conference has ended. You will now be disconnected. Goodbye.